I'd like to call the meeting to order. Our first order of business is to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facility in the community. Project 2014-047. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or constituents pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body and the consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel. Matt Country and Earl Probe is the two items we will discuss under that. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, de-motion, salaries, discipline, or resignation of specific officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, Economic Development Authority. Under three, discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, and that is the former Blacksburg Middle School property. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second to go into closed meeting. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spitz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Set eyes.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting, to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard discussed or conveyed by the Board, or considered by the Board. Have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Spitz?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Set eyes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to our board meeting tonight. Our first order of business on our agenda would be our invocation. This is when we, the Board, observe a moment of silence to reflect on the business at hand. And after we reflect and observe that moment of silence, we will be led in the pledge by Mr. Meadows, our county administrator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
Well, our first order of business is a presentation. And we'd like to present Ms. Karen Edmonds. Well, let me read what's on our flag here. Outstanding Service Award presented to Karen Edmonds by the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors in grateful appreciation of your outstanding service and dedication to the employees of Montgomery County from July 1989 to December 2014. And I believe this is a special recognition for Karen who has done so much in human, been a human resources director, and I think you're one person that every employee in Montgomery County knows. And I've had the honor to meet Karen a number of years ago, I mean, a number of years ago. I'm not going to go way back because it might tell your age and mine, but she's always been a dedicated employee, and I think your service to the county has been exceptional and worthy of this commendation. What we're going to do is let you come forward, and so the board members can come down and take a picture with you. Well, I'm going to say this too. I asked Karen how many years of service has she had even with her, I guess, and 39 and a half. And I guess when you first got, became an employee, a state employee job, it's the one that whoever you worked for didn't get sued for taking a child.
That's right.
Taking a child and giving a full-time job because she's only 40 and has worked 39 and a half years. But on behalf, we really wish you the best of luck and many, many years of retirement. I always say, I want to live so long, but the Social Security Administration's and the Hitler Squad have to knock me out because they think we do wrong. So I hope you live much longer than that. And let's, they're going to get in front of Chris because he's tall everywhere. We've got a long time, but we're giving her back. so none of us fall out of the rocket ship. So at times, we don't want to lose any of our passengers. Our next order of business is public address, and this is the time to when anyone who would like to address the board on any county matter. And I have four people who signed up to speak tonight, and we ask that you come to the board, you state your name and address, and direct all your comments to the board, and that you have five minutes. So when you come, state your name and address, and you have five minutes to address the board. So our first one is Mr. Murray, Bill Murray.
Evening. Y'all probably know by now that the town of Blacksburg is, oh, Nick, Bill Murray, my 401 given slain in Blacksburg. The town of Blacksburg is...
Can you lift that up? Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
I don't know if it's on. Didn't sound like it's on. Green light. Okay. What is it working?
I don't know. I don't know.
Test it one time. One, two, three. One, two, three. I don't think it's working.
It's not picking his voice up.
It's great. Yeah. Okay, try it again. Test, test.
Yeah, that's better.
About two weeks ago, the town of Blacksburg rezoned the 401 side of Blacksburg Estates. And they did that with promises of detailed plans to relocate all the current residents. Now, this is a little upsetting and concerns the county in many ways, but the landlord is sitting in, and you love this, in warm, sunny Florida, waiting for his million-dollar payday. The promises were made for incentives, and I think the county's in on that, in addition to details about rebates on taxes, a lot of other stuff. The relocation is a problem for many, and as John Bush, the council member, suggested, the project should be halted until details of the relocation of all the residences is complete. As one of those residents, my choice is as to where to live. How very limited. I cannot afford to live anywhere else in Blacksburg and pay the higher rents. This project is neither affordable nor for seniors as it's being sold. Most of the current residents in the park are looking at some sort of disability with Social Security or third-party, or Social Security retired. That means that their average income is about $10,000 a year. They're currently paying about $300 a month in rent while they own their homes, trailers. That $300 a month comes to about 36 percent of their income. The project that is afforded is proposing a rent of $435 per month. That's over 50 percent of their income. It's not affordable. No senior has Social Security continued to live there, even if they were accepted into the development. This project is just a bad idea. The owners are in court, they're absent, and they're waiting for their big payday. While the long-term residents of Blacksburg are being pushed out of their homes, homes that they own, they're losing everything. Not only the homes they lose, torches, gardens, some people have added onto their trailers to make them very comfortable, and it's just, it's, Blacksburg and the county face the possibility of homeless senior citizens and disabled citizens. Now, the problem is spilling over into the county, is where are people going to live? There's no place in Blacksburg. Blacksburg's rents are outrageous, and they're driven up by students and money coming in from other parts of the state. So there's no place for people to go. I don't know if there's any place in the county, or what the county can do, but it's going to soon become a county problem. I just thought I'd comment on it tonight, give you all a heads up, so there's not a big panic when it does hit the county. That's all I really need to say for now. I'll be back.
Thank you. Good to see you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Linda Majors?
Hi, my name is Linda Majors. I live at 26, 25th Tabor Road, Blacksburg. I wanted to talk about the alternative routes for the Mountain Valley Pipeline that have been proposed, two of them from Montgomery County. One is 87, which goes along Colbank Hollow Road, which they even said goes through a conservation easement. And of course, the Blue Ridge Land Trust and the New River Land Trust and the Blue Ridge Land Conservancy have both, you know, set to FERC and to Mountain Valley Pipeline that this was off limits because the conservation easement prohibits grading, blasting, and earth removal. But they went ahead and put that on to, I'm sure, to avoid the Preston Forest area. The other one is Alternative 93, which goes directly through Slushes Chapel Cave Conservation Area that the state has identified has globally rare crustaceans and millipedes in it. And then the water, because we live on Cars, goes right down into the Mill Creek watershed. I just wanted you to be aware of this before you have the work session so that you can be aware of, to me, it seems like alternatives are proposed that shouldn't even be proposed. They're not looking for good alternatives. They're just drawing the line on the map and saying, all right, we're going to eliminate this little problem, and, you know, they're not concerned about, we're just talking environmental stuff here, not even people and other people's property. So I just wanted to bring that up to you tonight before we work session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for listening to me. I'm Tina Badger, 4181 Bluebird Drive, Ellison, Virginia, here on behalf of Preserve Montgomery County, Virginia. And I'm also here to speak about the alternative routes of the Mountain Valley, proposed Mountain Valley Pipeline. I know that Route 110 has taken largely out of Montgomery County, but there still is a small corner down there near Lafette and Ellison that's being affected, and I hope that even though it's the tiniest part of the county, that you'll still stand behind the citizens and in opposition of this pipeline, because I don't think there's any good place in the county for it to go. And one of the other things that I want you to take note of, and you may already know this, is they published the alternative routes last week, and they showed the two that Linda Majors spoke about that go around Preston Forest. And as Pat Tracy likes to put it, it pretty much puts a noose around Preston Forest, so those don't seem like ideal routes at all. And what I noticed about a month ago, driving down North Fork Road, just past Lancer's Truck Stop, just where the V-Dock facility is there, there are two Mountain Valley survey stakes right off of North Fork Road there, which is not on either of the published routes. So I want to know why there are survey stakes that are still there and that have only been there for about a month in an area that's not on either of the, any of the original route or the alternative route 110. It's about a mile and a half west of the actual original corridor that went to the east side of Lafette. This is about a mile and a half west, which I figured was probably their way of taking it around the Spring Hollow reservoir in Rockland County. But I wanted you to be aware of that. So obviously, they're surveying different areas that they're not publishing routes for. And you may want to question them about what their intentions are in Montgomery County, because there's no way they can go from the 110 route over in Rockland County and cut back to this without cutting right across Fort Lewis Mountain and coming back down. There's no way they could do it. And additionally, I live right on the Rockland County, Montgomery County line. I'm a citizen of Montgomery County, but the Route 110 is going to affect me even greater than it would if it was stayed in the original route. So citizens of Montgomery County are still being affected regardless of whether they changed the route or not. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening. My name is Brad Klein. I live at 4656 Susanna Drive. I'd like to address the alternate routes that have been proposed through Montgomery County for the Mountain Valley Pipeline and going by maps that were published online by Mountain Valley Pipeline maybe last week, which you may not have seen yet. But I'd like to first state that with respect to Montgomery County, there are two main routes that have been proposed that would affect the path through Montgomery County. And it does not seem like these alternate routes do anything to improve the plight of the citizens of Montgomery County who would originally have been affected by the original route of the pipeline. I don't think these routes are any different in terms of the dangerous posed to the citizens of Montgomery County. I'd like to address the alternate routes 93 and 87, which appear to affect Preston Forest because those are the main changes in Montgomery County. And indeed, I would like to sort of reference the comment made by the previous speaker about this being a noose around the neck of Preston Forest, basically. These alternate routes go, as opposed to going through Preston Forest, go right around the edges of Preston Forest, and as such, they introduce additional dangers to the residents in that region. Alternate Route 93 now goes along Jefferson Forest Drive. In doing so, going along Jefferson Forest Drive, it cuts off, if there's a problem with the pipeline in that area, it cuts off egress for everyone on Jefferson Forest Drive. It also cuts off egress for everybody on Susanna Drive, because the only egress for people on Susanna Drive is Jefferson Forest Drive. In addition, that Jefferson Forest Drive, Alternate Route 93, goes across two fire trails that are other alternative egresses from that area. So that line goes across two fire trails, which are the major escape route. They go along Jefferson Forest Drive, which is also an escape route for everyone on Jefferson Forest Drive, everyone on Susanna Drive. That Route 93 then turns down part of Preston Forest Drive. That part where it turns down, you know, Preston Forest Drive is the only other egress point for everyone on Jefferson Forest, everyone on Susanna, and for everyone at the top of Preston Forest Drive. So where are the folks going to go if there's a problem with that part of the, of the pipeline? There's 30 to 35 houses combined at least on Jefferson Forest Drive and Susanna, in addition to whatever number of houses are up near the top of Preston Forest Drive as well. The Route 87, that goes along now the southwest border of Preston Forest, that cuts off two major egress routes for two very long streets in Preston Forest, which is South Jefferson Forest Drive and Pireman Road. It looks like the pipeline cuts right across South Jefferson Forest Drive. So that is the only egress point for people on South Jefferson Forest Drive. There's no other way for them to get out except for that spot where the pipeline passes. Additionally, the fact that this alternate 87 goes along Colbank Hollow means that almost all major egresses for Preston Forest would be cut off if there's a problem with that portion that goes along Colbank Hollow. Also, the way that is positioned and given the nature of the trees and foliage in Preston Forest, if that alternate Route 87 ever caught on fire somehow, that fire would just spread right up the mountain and just burn everything from the bottom to the top of Preston Forest, given, given the location of that route. So in conclusion, I don't think that these alternate routes do anything to improve the safety or well-being of the people of Montgomery County, and I ask that you please continue to oppose this project. Thank you.
We only have four people who signed up to speak at our public address session. Now, we're opening up to members of the audience who may not have had an opportunity to sign up, but at this particular time, if you want to speak to the board, you can do so at this time, and remember to come and state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Margaret Roston, or Maggie, from 2124 Mount Tabor Road in Blacksburg. I have been kind of out of the loop here because I have a very sick mother, and I think a lot of people have similar issues, and they can't keep coming to these meetings. We don't get paid like the MVP people do, so we try to do stuff when we can. And I just think it's really sad how the American system is that, you know, households have to stop doing what they're doing and forego what they need to be doing, and we don't get paid to do it, and you guys don't get paid enough for what you do, that's for sure. Anyway, that said, these alternative routes obviously affect other people. Obviously, Preston Forest is being in stranglehold with these things, but Colbank Hollow people, Colbank Ridge people, they're cut off completely getting out from Colbank Ridge if it goes down Colbank Hollow Road. And some of these routes are, hey, this is good, it's getting moving away from me a little bit, some of them, some are actually going to come closer to me, but that's not the point. The point is, this thing is not needed at all for anybody except to make money for the stockholders of this particular company or the oil companies. We can't forget that. This whole thing is just bad all the way around. Whether it's going farther down Mount Tabor Road, or into the next county, or whatever, it's going to affect somebody's water, it's going to cause forest fires somewhere. I'm very upset when I hear about blasts with a rail car that blows up, but that's one rail car. It's, the propane blew up, yes, a bunch of people may have gotten killed, it screwed up a whole bunch of transportation on that, on that railroad and so forth, or truck routes where they blow up. It's not like two cubic, was it, 2 billion cubic feet under high pressure going for an hour. There's unlimited amount that goes in those rail cars and so forth. There's much more contained fire, ability to contain the fire. So these pipelines are terrifying because they can't stop the fires quickly. They also are permanent destruction to an environment. My understanding about the original route was that it was going to go through the smallest portion of the national forests it possibly could. Obviously, it's a much straighter line for them to do some of these other routes they're talking about, not the strangleholds around the Preston Forest and so forth, but going farther up, it's a straighter line for them, less to build. But that means more national forest. Now, what on earth is the purpose of the national forests? Is it to be less represented, or, you know, so they can put these lines through wherever they feel like it, whenever the population, more people complain, they move it over to a national forest? We need those forests. We need our national parks. And it's up to entities like ours to say that, hey, that's not good either. Why are we destroying natural forest for the private interest of a handful of stockholders and so forth? Besides, natural gas is going out. It's not going to be as important as the things like solar, and we're going to be stuck with this infrastructure for decades, and nobody's paying, putting aside money to clean up the toxic, the long toxic dumps that are going to be going on. We need... We need, as local people, we need to keep saying, hey, where's the money that's going to clean up this mess? These companies, MVP is an LLC. It protects them. They don't have to pay for all this cleanup. Their insurance alone goes so far, and then who are the taxpayers going to sue to get more money to cover all these bills that could come up? So all these things have to be remembered when we're trying to protect just our area, but it's the whole world that has to be protected, I mean, our whole country. So anyway, I'm just bringing up all these points again because there aren't enough people who can keep showing up to all these meetings and so forth. So thank you very much, I appreciate all that you're trying to do. And I know that you don't want to see our county cut up anymore with this kind of stuff, so, thanks. Take care, be safe, hope you all stay warm and bundle up, put on sweaters, and don't turn on more gas or electric or whatever.
Good evening. My name is Doug Chancey, I live in 2068 Lusters Gate Road in Blacksburg, actually Montgomery County. And I don't have a whole lot prepared, I just wanted to stand tall with the people that have presented against the pipeline and try to appeal to your highest self, whatever that might be. And talk about the 21st century. And if you think about it, it hasn't really started yet. We're still in the 20th century, when corporations are in control, where oil and gas and fossil fuels are still trying to give us the burden of their plans of bypassing any benefit for our communities in the Appalachian Mountains. I'm not just talking about Montgomery. I'm talking about the entire area. The Blue Ridge Mountains are the second oldest, most diverse forests in the world. And you can't live in much more a beautiful place than Montgomery County or the Appalachian Mountains. And to continue this 20th century ideal of we can keep taking everything from Mother Earth is not forward-thinking. If we start using our local funds to put solar panels on the public buildings right here downtown Christiansburg, we'll make historic decisions. And if you want to be part of the people in 20, 30 years, like they were saying about massage therapy 40 years ago, oh, that's bizarre. Well, it's not bizarre anymore because the American Medical Association has come out and said it's the best back therapy you can do. So are we going to be part of a community that said, if you have to put alternative in front of it, the alternative energies were right, and our community is ruined with pipelines going across beautiful mountains? I don't care where it is. It doesn't need to happen. We need the alternative energies that are the energies of the future, and we should be using them right now. No questions asked. I ask you to join, be leaders in the 21st century, starting right now, and continue to oppose this pipeline here in Montgomery County, in Craig County, where they want to hide it and a few people might want it. But it's still going too close to Mount Lake, where I want to bring in tourists from all over the world to see what we have here in Virginia and not hear the noise of a transfer of building or something, I don't know. It's a mess. Please, let's start the 21st century now, right here in Montgomery County, and push for solar fuel, wind energy, and all the other things they're coming out with, I can't even name them. But we don't need these fossil fuels coming anywhere. We need to stop the production and come up with better ways. One way is industrial hemp, which has just been legalized to grow as a research project. The governor still needs to sign the bill, but that's a good step because we can make oil out of it if we get our farmers growing. That's the 21st century coming. Be part of it, thanks.
Anyone else who would like to address the board? There ain't no one coming forward, we'll close our public address session. Well, our next item, do we have an addendum?
No, sir, we have no addendum.
No addendum. Consent agenda.
Move approval.
However, motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Would the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next item is to go into work session. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the following. Commission of Revenue, Proration, and Personal Property Tax. Two, Fieldstone Housing Development. Three, Mountain Valley Pipeline. Officials from MVP will update the board on information regarding the project. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to go into work session. Would the clerk please call roll?
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
We'll end work session. I guess Helen, I think you'll up first. Welcome.
This is my new business form.
See, can you get into the mic a little bit? It seemed like, okay.
Another one that can be for proration. But I wanted you to see how information can be put out there, okay? Plus, it's good for you all to have this so that you know what business personal property is anyway. The information that I have enclosed are emails that I received from other commissioners directing me on what would be good, what I need, what to make sure I asked for. I have graphs that tell you what money they bought in. I went to Goochland County for 2010, they went to proration then instead of 2013. And several counties have twice a year personal property collection. So their numbers are a little askew, okay? And she warned me when she sent it to me. I've given you a list of prorating counties and non-prorating counties. As far as what proration would cost you, on my side of the hall, we have gotten it down to NADA. Our Munis work system will do proration. We've been told that all they have to do is flip a button. We have to test it, we've never done proration, so there will be testing to do. NADA has an evaluator that they're trying to get rid of that would be perfect for us. It's only $530 for unlimited access. But when they take that away from us, it would be NADA online, and I've given you the cost. But we shouldn't have to add much more than, if we even have to add that high, 10,000 cars after September 1st deadline, okay? So I've tried to give you everything that I think you would need to know. Last time when we talked, we talked about a person, and I told you that I would try with one person. If you promised me I could have a second if I needed them. If I need them, I would come back and ask you, I would make a case for it, okay? I'm not out here to up the number of people in my office for proration. The only thing that I can tell you that's any different than last time is that you have these charts and that it's up to you as to whether we go to proration. It's totally up to you. If you want to go to proration, we will, if you don't, that's fine too, okay? But it's not only money for the county. We do right now a lot of abatements and supplementals because people leave the county and we can't abate it. And they get so mad. So that would help my office, that would be one thing that I want, is for people not to be mad. Because while, if you move in in January, it's really nice to get that whole year. But when you move out in January and you have to pay us and somebody else too, that's not a good feeling and they'd get really upset, okay? Do you have any questions?
Board members.
Thank you for this. Can you explain what NADA is and what?
NADA is...
I'm a little bit confused about, so there's a software package that we have right now, correct?
No, we send, in July, we send all the cars that are in our system to NADA to be valued.
Okay.
NADA is the NDA book, the National Automotive Book.
Okay.
Okay, and that's what most commissioners use to value their cars. They have online, but if you send it to them, they do it online one day.
Okay.
And get it back to us.
So, and you're saying that they're moving to an online-only system?
Well, no, we can still do the group for the book, but we, the add-ons that would come after, for proration after September the 1st, well, probably July 1st, would be add-ons.
Okay.
And they have to be valued separately.
Okay, and then how many evaluations are you estimating? How many evaluations per year, roughly?
This last year, we had 59,000.
59,000, okay, all right. Because we have the prices for the different levels, but, okay.
Yeah, and that would be add-ons if we go, if they do away with the evaluator.
Evaluator, okay.
I have a couple of questions, I guess. The NDA is, of course, National Automotive Dealers Association. That's how all of your car lots get, how much they are willing to put in a car and what they can expect to sell it for?
Right.
Just for information there. And, well, you would have to send something like that out, I don't know. For example, you open a book, you know what they're telling you about? You open the book and say, what are you going to put, average or clean or whatever into the vehicle? I mean, that...
And you're talking months and months of work. You're talking months...
Well, how would they do it?
They do it, they have it set up in a system, already on their system. And by then, they look at the VIN number and put that value on it with the computer. It's automatically done.
Yeah, and we couldn't do that?
No. I wish we could.
Okay, I don't know, that's...
No.
I have a question, anyone else have it? That's okay.
No, we couldn't do that. We, if we took the book and sat down and looked, we would get a lot of them, but we wouldn't get all of them.
And then for the new employee that you're requesting, what level employee, like what salary?
It can be entry level.
Just an entry level?
They don't know anything about our system, so...
Okay.
They would have to learn everything.
Okay.
But it would be for vehicles, proration only.
Okay, so they would be tasked specifically to this?
Right, they would be, I have a cubicle to put them in.
Okay.
Away from everybody else.
Okay, supervisor Biggs.
Okay, so the person that you would get to do this, they would have enough work that every single day, they would be working the whole time just on this one thing?
Yes.
Okay, and the other places that you contacted, did they have a separate person that did it also? Is that how they did it?
No, they, most of them share jobs because they're so small.
Mm-hmm.
They're so small.
Oh, they were smaller.
If you look at the list for proration, the county that's closest to us is Culpeper, and they have something like 48,000 people, 48,506. One has 29,298. That's the population, that's not the number of cars they do. And if the charts show you, most of them tell you how many cars they put in, how many they...
Well, there's Roanoke County's on here as well.
Roanoke County prorates, they already prorate.
Yeah, it says, according to the chart, they've been...
Right, and that's who we would use to model ours after because they have our computer system.
And I think, going back to Mary's question, do they have somebody full-time in their commissioner's office who does proration?
No, but they also have IT people who pull the information for them, we don't have that.
Okay, so they have IT people within the commissioner's office?
Upstairs, not in their office.
Within the county administration.
But that's what she does, she pulls it in and separates it and gives them what they need.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Are there opportunities for that here? Is our, I know our IT staff is small.
I would say there's certainly the opportunity to look at it and see. I don't know in terms of workload whether that would be a big addition or not, but we would certainly be willing to look at that.
Okay, do we still have a vacant position in the, in ITC?
I don't think so.
The web?
Well, that one, yes, we do, yes, that one we do, yes, we do have a vacant position.
In the IT, you have a vacant position?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That was the webmaster position that we created.
So Helen, if we were to go ahead and do this relatively soon, when do you think this could be implemented?
I don't think we can do it now until January of next year.
June 2016?
I think we can do it then. And I, my thought was the best way to find out whether you want to do it or not is to let us pull the information into Munis, try a year without it actually going live, without it actually affecting anybody, and see what kind of numbers we come up with and what kind of problems we run into ahead of time so that we can do a good job.
Do you think if you had, say, six months of 2015 to do that? Like if we were to approve something to allow you during this budget season, to allow you to test it out, then we'd be ready for January 1, 2016?
I think we would.
Yeah.
Would you also hire someone, go ahead and hire your employee?
In July, when the budget took...
Not until next July?
This coming July, right, July 2015.
Well, that was, yeah, that would be my question. So you would want them July 2015 for, at the beginning of the fiscal year?
Right.
Okay.
And I put that in my budget.
You did, okay, and you requested, okay.
Let me, one of the paragraphs I got through and scanning this was that, if the numbers pan out, the way I experienced colleagues projected will, then it is definitely cost-effective. We would bring in about a million dollars and the one additional person in my office, and of course, the one additional person in the treasurer's office. I know what, I said, I know what you are thinking is only costing taxpayers about $100,000 with benefits. Proration would end the conversations, disputes regarding debts, repos, move-outs, estates, and sales, et cetera. But you're looking at bringing in somewhere close to a million dollars... dollars in revenue?
I don't know.
You don't know, but that's, I guess, the high end of an estimate or guestimate, put it that way.
I think it's the-
I think those were emails from other counties.
Yes, from other counties.
Those were statements from other counties.
Oh, I thought they were saying if the numbers pan out. I just got to this paragraph, and I thought this was your paragraph.
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
These are emails from other counties telling me what to look for, what to check out. I thought it was interesting that you all see this because I can come here and tell you what kind of problems they tell me that they're going to have, but if you see it in their own words, it helps. There's one where they hired a part-time person, she got a full-time job and left, and he was left high and dry without anybody to do his proration. So, so-
I would think if we got that far, that it would be some cross-training within the organization.
I already have two people that do that.
To where if you lost somebody-
But they don't do it all the time.
Yeah.
So like, did you say we needed to hire a person to actually do the trial period? Like the thing that you're trying to do is, you're trying to do, what'd you call it? A study? I know there's a word for it, but you're trying to do that and you're trying to find out if in fact, we would make money doing it.
Right.
Would it be cost-effective? And you want to do it for a year, and then I think Matt suggested six months?
Well, we already have the first half of 2015 pulled in.
Oh, okay.
No, wait, 2014 pulled in to bill for this year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But each week now, we're getting printouts from the DMV for what's being bought and sold. So we'll have that information there for that person to run a full book.
And then we could tell if it was going to be cost-effective?
Right, right.
But you would need that person to do that?
Right.
Okay, I think I got it now.
And I think what the paragraphs reveal and also the charts that Helen has provided is that this is, this is going to bring money to the county in a substantial amount, probably.
Yes.
So, and it will also get, I think I might have copied you all. I got an email from an IRA, former resident of the county that had the car 30 days in the county and had to pay years' worth of property tax on it.
But if you go through with this, you need to hire the person now. What happens if it don't pan out? What are we going to do if that person ends?
Well, I think we should tell them upfront, you know, this is temporary until the board says it's permanent, until you actually go to proration, you know?
How much are we making a year now?
I think my, I think my lowest paid one is 29-
Twenty-nine hundred, thousand?
Thousand.
Dollars?
No, no, no.
Add benefits to that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Add benefits to 29.
So the lowest vehicle that you have run through is 29,000?
No, I think that's the employee.
No, it's the employee.
Yeah, salary, yeah.
Money. How much money do you think the county's getting now?
Oh, you have a chart in here that shows you what was following last year.
Yes, I understand that, but I want to see how much that is.
We bought in 484,889,350. That's assessed value. That is not dollar value, okay?
Who did the assessing?
I'm sorry.
Who did the assessing?
Banda.
So you just have one person does all the assessing?
NADA puts the values on them.
The book, the book.
The book. NADA, the book, does the assessing.
If somebody reads that book to find out what it's done, who does that?
Nancy and Paul do that. But they don't read the book to get the value. NADA-
How do they get it?
NADA values it. It's sent off to NADA, and NADA values all the cars and then sends it back when we download it into our system.
Okay, so at the present time, it's sent to NADA.
Right.
So proration won't be much different from what you've got if it's going to NADA anyhow?
Right. But there's a lot of work to it. If somebody moves into the county from Radford, once we go to proration, somebody comes from Radford, we can't bill them that first year. That record has to be coded so that it goes automatically into the system the next year. If somebody moves from Montgomery County to Radford, then we have to have that vehicle coded. So there's lots more work with proration than not, okay? It's not just simply a matter of getting all the cars downloaded into the system and putting values on them.
Okay, and-
Okay? I mean, it has to be, they have to be coded, they have to be downloaded, addresses have to be checked.
So, and doing that, and the least expensive one is 29,000 dollars. What do we do to all these other cars that come through that we have to put a value on? You know, some new cars are not that high.
Right, right. The 29,000 is not a car value.
Oh, that's when you were using, that's your new employee?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. What is the, do you know what the lowest car value you use?
The lowest we use is 300.
I think, you know, if the commissioner has a plan to do this, I think this is, this is good value for money. I think this is something we should pursue. So, that's where I am.
Like, is it something that we need to act on after the work session? Is that what you're thinking, Mayor?
Well, I'm not sure if we need to, what we would need to do in order for the county to move to proration.
You eventually have to adopt an ordinance.
An ordinance?
Implement it.
Okay.
You wouldn't do that until January.
Yeah.
Well, maybe December to the effect of January.
So you want to do that until you find out that it worked, correct, according to them?
Well, then maybe if we just had consensus for the commissioner to investigate it, or I don't know.
To set it further, I mean, to go on and-
Yeah, that we're interested, to indicate that we're interested in hearing more.
To proceed on with it.
At what point do we give the commissioner, if she proceeds on with it, the permission to hire somebody?
Well, I think we can't hire anybody until that position is built into the budget. I mean, you can't hire them right now-
No, I know that.
Because there's no money to-
Put it in our budget.
Pay for that person to June 30th. It'd have to be after July 1 to where the person is.
July 15 or something like that.
And I think, my point of view, I would look at it in the total budget package to compare it to, I guess, is it like additions or new programs or whatever, some sort of added to a standard budget?
But, don't we have to say to the administrator and-
In the budget process to plan for it?
In the budget process to plan for it, that's what I'm thinking.
Yes, if there's consensus of the board to move forward with this concept, then I will include in the budget that's presented.
That's what I was really asking about.
I would be happy with that as long as, as Ms. Royall said, that there's clarity about this new position, that it's a temporary position until January or until we decide to move forward with it.
And I got another question. I mean, in looking at this from, from an email you got from Sarona with Hawke County, it's something like this. If, and this is thinking outside the box, if we add a person to the commissioner revenues office, do you know whether it'd have any impact on the treasurer's office that they would come and say, since proration, I need additional person to, since they're generating all of this work for me? Is it a possibility? I know you can't speak for his office, but it was a comment in here.
All of his commissioners work with their treasurer to get help on both sides of the hall. And as far as I would think, I would think that he would need a balance because there's going to be a lot more work.
So he would need a-
Not as much on his side as my side because, but he's going to get a tremendous amount of supplementals and abatements that he's not used to getting, and that takes a while.
His workload could go up, which in turn could say, he, I'm not, you can't speak for him, but he would probably say, I need additional position since this work, I think we need to really think about this. Any other comments, questions, whatever?
Thank you for the information. Good information.
Yeah, good information. We had consensus for her to, okay, we have consensus for you to proceed on.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you. Now, next item is Philstone Housing Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We don't have anybody here to speak on that tonight. What we did was included some information in your board packet related to this item. I sent out an email over the weekend, I believe, that talked about the financial incentives that this developer is seeking for this project. As I indicated, the town of Blacksburg is looking at, trying to get my numbers here, their total package is about $605,000 over 15 years for waived fees. And then they're also looking at an approximate $395,000 in kind value because of the use of a stormwater management facility that's located near the site. What we simply did is we used the same assumptions in terms of value, and I did receive something from William Park earlier today that I forwarded out to you as well that confirmed that assumption. 144 units, investment at about $50,000 a unit, would result in about a $7.2 million increase in property assessment. And if you take the annual increase over the current valuation, that would result in an incentive of about a little less than 59,000 per year or a total of 883,000 over 15 years. So I wanted to share that with you for discussion, to get your thoughts. As we mentioned at the last meeting, the town of Blacksburg will be considering this proposal at their board, at their council meeting tomorrow night. Should it not move forward from their council, then I would certainly assume that we won't be moving anything forward from our side. But again, didn't want to make any assumptions, so wanted to just provide this information for your, for your discussion and see what thoughts are out there.
So, can I just, can we just clarify what they're asking here? So if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, and there's a good chance I'm not, is that they are asking that their property tax be assessed at the current value only for the next 15 years?
That's correct.
Okay. And what happens if the tax rate rises?
That's not, that question came up, we don't have an answer to that yet. It would depend on how the board would want to, the board could say, we'll provide 15 years of incentive based on the current rate, or you could say, we'll provide 15 years of incentive based on whatever the rate is for that particular year. That, I would assume, I didn't see anything in the information that's been provided. That's certainly something I would think you could negotiate as part of a package.
Have we ever done any sorts of incentives like this?
No.
No. Have there been other, kind of, these workforce housing projects that the county has?
Not to my knowledge. Carol is shaking her head. Is there one?
Yeah, the one on-
Oh, yes. There was a, there was a, thank you. There was a, I was thinking that the county had participated in. No, there was a workforce housing project that was done out on Price's Fourth Road, or Pepper's Ferry Road, excuse me, across from Bethel Elementary School.
Bellevue.
Bellevue, yeah.
That's okay.
Somewhere out there.
I know where I am. I can see it in my mind.
That's the one, Nicholas.
Sorry. Yes, there were several investors involved in that. That was right when I arrived here, and I'm looking at Marty now. They didn't ask for any-
No, we did, they did use the EDAs as financing mechanism, which provided them with access to tax credits. So we did provide them that. So they got, they got reduced financing because of what we allowed them to go through with the EDA.
Okay.
But no, we didn't have any cash, so.
It was next.
So this will be the first project ever?
Well, the projects are similar. The only difference has been that one went out and worked the butt off and got the information and built some houses, and the other wants us to give it to them.
Okay, Mary. Okay, my two comments are, the first one is that, you know, we, this particular project is in the town of Blacksburg, which the town of Blacksburg is in the county because we're all county citizens. But if we do something that's in one town, then it could be that another project would come along in Christiansburg, just to be aware of, like, once you do one thing, it can lead to other things. The other thing I had thought about, you know, they seem to need this to get their financing, to do this job. They're trying to get these different things, but, I mean, they said what they wanted, but, you know, if it ever came down to us really looking at it, I mean, why is 15 years so important? I mean, maybe the county could negotiate and say, well, we can't do 15, maybe we can do five. I don't know. But that's just, those are just thoughts that I had when looking at this.
And I think those are valid comments. There's, this is the request that the developers put forward. I mean, it can, it's certainly all open to negotiation.
Sorry, just one quick question. Were they invited to?
Not tonight.
Not tonight? Okay, so this was just intended to be a discussion?
I had asked, and that's what you received earlier today, I'd asked for William Park to put together his thoughts and information so I could share that with the board. I told him that tonight would be just an opportunity to discuss the board's thoughts on the project. If the board had any desire to move forward, we would have a work session next Monday to further discuss it.
Because we need to know what Blacksburg is going to do, if they're doing anything.
Right, and they should make their decision tomorrow night.
And my concerns are, once we start this, just as you just invented, we're going to be expected to do it on the next project, and the next project, and the next project. And I have some real concerns. I'm not a, I know to recruit businesses, every locality does that, but I'm not aware that every locality is doing this type of incentive for residential construction, residential houses. And once we start that process, I'm worried that we won't be able to stop. And so I have some genuine concerns that this is not something I want to be able to support. I understand Blacksburg may decide to do it, and I respect their own body, and they may decide to do it, and that's their decision. But as far as making almost a county-wide policy that we're going to start this, it's not something I can support.
Well, then the other, you know, the other thing that they throw back at us is that in our comprehensive plan, you know, we've, and different things, we've said that we need lower-cost housing in the county. And again, Blacksburg and Christiansburg are in the county, so you're sort of looking at it that way. And another thing that concerns me about hearing from one of our citizens tonight, I didn't realize about the rent differential there. I sort of thought that, I thought, I thought things were worked out, but it sounds like things aren't all the way worked out about where people are going and what people are doing. And so I would like a complete update on that from the developer.
And as I understood it, it's not for low income. This new development is not for low income. It is for basically middle, well, lower-middle class.
Yeah.
And so it's not designed for the people that are currently living in the mobile home parks.
Like your, like teachers' aides and beginning teachers and, I mean, that kind of thing is what they get.
And what's really bad at 15-year program? And what's really bad at 15-year program, that's about the time that the house is not going to be worth anything.
I appreciate you doing that.
You've got a $50,000 house, and you let it sit on rental for 15 years. Go get your pocketbook out, because it's going to cost you more than that picture.
Didn't the newspapers say they were going to move the trailers over to the other side and pay for that?
Actually, they made, in the presentation, they said that part of it is, because one of my questions were, are you going to pay for the move of individuals' mobile homes over to another park? He said yes. Now, some of the mobile homes...
Couldn't be moved.
One or two of them can be moved.
But some of it can't be moved because of their age and, and stability issues, so...
And I thought they were going to replace those.
There was, that kind of got wishy-washy.
They didn't really mean to say that.
I didn't hear, yes, we're going to replace them. I heard a lot of other, you know, maybe...
They were going to look for some people to try to help them out.
Yes.
It wasn't all that.
Well, I thought they were going, had worked out moving all but about 10.
Right.
And they were still negotiating with those nine or 10 people, and that some of the mobile homes, it's like you said, the stability of them and so forth would not handle a move.
That's my understanding as well.
And when you look at the, there's a point, I think, we might be missing a little bit is that, when they explained about the income levels, they're talking about if the average income was, I think, $42,000 or something like that, if a person only made 60% of that average, the rent would be based on the 60% of that. And I think it was, was it, I don't know if the 40 was in there, I can't remember the figures that I seen, but it was talking about that it would be based on their income.
And also their household size.
Yeah, household size or something along those lines. So, and then they, they talked about, I believe there's, there has been a need for a long time, and it's been a lot of talk in the Talonsen County, both about building workforce housing, you know, because at one particular time, I can't remember, but they was going to try to do something up on Harding Avenue at one time, just outside the town. And this were like teachers, police officers, you know, nurses and so forth. So I don't, I hope in being cautious that we don't miss an opportunity for low-to-modern income people, that it's an opportunity for them to have a place to live, for the simple reason, I think, several years ago, there was a developer trying to do away with the mobile home park, period, to build some high-end development in there. And then it was, I think a number of people fled into chambers in, the council chambers in Blacksburg, so they backed off of that. And now this project's coming along, and so I think we need to keep an open mind when we look for workforce housing. And he said that people in Montgomery County would have priority over anybody else in getting housing, and filling up the housing, I guess. So, and I think the comp plan says something about workforce housing. So I think that we have to, however we proceed, we have to proceed cautiously. And it's two parts of this proposal. One of those parts, half the proposal is with the town of Blacksburg, and the other half is with us.
I think there's another part there, though, Bill.
Yeah.
You know, when you talk about mobile homes, and some of them are not in the greatest shape. There is no such thing as a bad place to live if you don't have one.
That's right. I agree.
You know, some of those folks, if it gets pulled out of money, they're not going to have one. Who's going to feed them? Who's going to find them a place to shelter?
If they had a place, and I, and I agree with Mary when she said that, I would like to see how the move would be worked out, to look out for, I guess Mr. Mary's one of those people, to look out for him. And if it is eight or 10 people, they need to move into other units and...
They should bring the first ones in.
Yeah, the priority should be...
And then empty out there, the other mobile homes.
Right.
But give them a little nicer place to live. Although, as he stated, they probably can't afford those. They're going to have to get some help from whoever to be able to afford one of them.
Well, I, I, I think the developer, Mr. Park, he's the one that's building Huckleberry Ridge over there. I don't know what the value of that place is when...
Millions.
Yeah, it'd be worth millions. And so I think finding 10 places to live should be something that would probably come out of his petty cash or something.
But he's made it pretty clear, he's not going to happy to come out of his petty cash. He's going to look for somebody even to help him move these mobile homes that are left over into the other part. So, you know, it's, he's looking for help, not, can I help him?
And, and I agree, we need to make sure, if, if we decide to go forward, whether we need to make sure that the people lived there are taken care of, that they're not put out on the street.
That's the only way that I look for it.
Yeah.
That's why we need an update. We need to know about what's happening there.
If they'll put a contract down with people, find some way to get the people that's in there now to have a same deal they got, a 15-year deal on it, where they're taking them to be there for 15 years, yeah, I'll, I'll back to that.
Well, one, one sense of direction I was looking for tonight is if we've tentatively scheduled a work session before next Monday's PSA meeting from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock to further discuss this item, and that is assuming that the town approves their portion of it tomorrow night. Is that something the board wishes to do? And if the council does not approve a package tomorrow night, do you want to have a work session next Monday or not?
They could be moved at that particular point until the town does something. I mean, we could have a work session on schedule for Monday night, but if the town doesn't do anything, then it, it's, it's sort of a, and they may change whatever incentives that they're going to do. And so we need to see what they do first, and then we can talk about it, whether we want to do something or not afterwards. How do you think?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, if the town doesn't approve it, I don't think it's worth talking about. But if it's, even if it's approved, I mean, I gotta say, I'm skeptical about this right now, so, but I'm happy to talk about it more, though, that's all.
I won't be there at the meeting on Monday night. I'll be on vacation, so I apologize that I won't be a part of that work session, one way or the other.
Well, this board didn't approve your vacation.
I understand that. I, I had to get my wife's approval. That's important, before I take that.
Where we going?
Montana.
Montana, where it's going?
Is it worth having a work session?
Mm-hmm. I think so.
You?
If it's all said, I don't want to make any...
I mean, this is, I mean, it's like if the, it's worth scheduling a work session at a particular point, but maybe not Monday if the town tables it or doesn't do anything. But if the town passes something, then we need to put it on for Monday. Is that...
I think the reason, wasn't there some kind of...
Time.
Cut timeline that the developer had to have something in by March, and that's why they wanted it all done? Or am I dreaming?
That's correct. That's correct. But if the town doesn't approve something tomorrow night, that timeline's going to get very difficult.
It would be stupid to take the lead on something.
Right.
So that's our responsibility to lead.
I'm not sure.
I'd like to, I mean, even if, even if, sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm, I'm very skeptical myself. I really am concerned that it does set a precedent. I know there are times when you have to maybe do something that is out of the policy realm, but I, I'm not sure that I'm in favor of that, like Mary was saying.
Yeah. It's some kind of proceeds or something that comes, they needed some support, they needed some, some incentives from local people to qualify. There's a lot of, if my memory serves, there's a lot of competitiveness in getting this, these financial incentives from, I don't know where they come, through the federal government, through Richmond or something along those lines.
And the more the local support is shown for projects like this, the higher the project rates.
The higher the rates.
Or you get a higher rating for that. That's what it is. But maybe that's why we need to have some more information from the developer, as Mary was saying too, to understand that.
Well, if, let's plan on this. If the, if the town moves this project forward in some form or fashion tomorrow night, we will have this on as a work session item next Monday. And next Monday, would ask that the developer be here to be, to be able to answer any further questions. If the town does not move it forward tomorrow night, then we can still forward some questions to the developer, but we will not have this as a work session Monday evening.
Is that good?
And I guess a point we need to remember is, we're being asked to give up potential revenue from the one and only source that really brings revenue into the county. And we're always talking about how, you know, we'd like to have other ways to do it, but yet we would be taking away. So you gotta, you gotta weigh that with what the good of it would be.
Oh.
Sorry, I just have two more comments. Is that one, I think Mary's point is very well taken, and it's also something else that she pointed out earlier, is that I think needs to be clarified from the developer, is that this is, this is entirely within town limits. And so we're being asked to, to intervene here, which is not all the, altogether common. And in fact, we've never done a residential property, as Chris pointed out. The second thing is, is that I would like to see some alternatives, is, this is their first, their first suggestion, so let, let's see their second suggestion, maybe even their third suggestion, too, if they have...
Negotiation plan.
People don't want to tell us after this for more.
Yeah. And I see a couple of things. I see, I see a thing is, and I take what you, you guys have said very seriously. One thing, if nothing happens, the tax rate's going to stay the same anyway.
Yeah.
And it might even be assessed even lower with the deterioration of mobile homes. So if the developer do not go through with plans, we still don't get the same old money that we're getting, I mean, even if it's the next five, 10, 15 years. Okay? So if we keep the same money over here and have some incentives for them to develop it, we're getting about the same money, but eventually we will get some more money. So I think you look at it both ways, says that...
But, you know, sorry, but, you know, money is not really everything.
Money is right.
You know, money, you can do a lot of things with money, but you can sure do a lot of things without it, too.
Yeah, but we gotta have it to function.
You gotta have what?
We gotta have money to function. We gotta have probably about $180 million for next year or more.
Well, okay.
So I, I think that we can get our questions together, our pros and our cons and, and so forth, and, and if the town passes it, to proceed on, on Monday. We have a very short PSA meeting, so we ought to be able to knock it out.
We'll be ready.
Any other, before we go to, I gotta get back to my...
Mountain Valley.
Yeah.
Where are you going in my town?
The next item is Mountain Valley Pipeline officials for an update.
Mr. Chair, we've got Max Macon and Joe Colley with EQT, and next area here this evening to give you an update on where things are with the Mountain Valley Pipeline project.
Good evening.
Thank you.
Chairman Brown, supervisors, Administrator Meadows, thank you for having us this evening. As Craig said, my name is Max Macon, representing Mountain Valley Pipeline. This is Joe Dolly. We appreciate you all having us here tonight to give you all an update. This is something we said we would do on a, on a regular basis last time we were here, and we appreciate your time very much. We've spent the last several months talking to literally thousands of stakeholders across the communities that the proposed pipeline would route through, to hear their concerns and carefully consider their feedback. Thanks to those who attended the 14 open houses that we held along the 300-mile route between December and the end of January. We brought in a, a number of folks from our various disciplines, whether it be safety or construction, engineering, environmental, to those open houses, to give everybody an opportunity to talk one-on-one with them, and we thank everybody for coming out to those. We're committed to tirelessly working to find the best route that we can for, for this pipeline and address the concerns of the communities along the way in a meaningful way. From day one, we've been committed to identifying that best route with the least impact to landowners, the environment, and cultural resources. As part of this effort, we're currently identifying and evaluating some alternative routes which have been mentioned here tonight. We did file those alternative options with FERC, I believe it was on Wednesday last week, so they are familiar now with the alternatives that are being looked at. And we've begun contacting landowners and the communities that are involved in those alternate routes. We'll spend the next several months evaluating those alternatives from a number of different aspects, topography, constructability, an evaluation of the environmental, historical, and cultural resources impacted. The decision on whether to use any or all or some of these alternatives will be made as we continue through the pre-filing and scoping process with FERC. We hope we've answered a number of the questions and concerns along the way over the past few months, and we realize there will be more as we continue. And the regulatory process will, will take some time. We're probably four months into a 24-month regulatory process with FERC. The expected next step would be for FERC to hold their scoping meetings. I think we've talked about this before. We, as the, as the applicant, held 14 public open houses, and FERC will come back into the communities and hold public meetings with Q and A with the FERC project manager. We're still waiting for those to be scheduled, and as soon as we know when those are, we will let you all know. We pledge to continue to communicate with the communities and the landowners along the route, and again, to, to try and find the best route possible and, and follow the regulatory process. That's the, a quick update we wanted to make. There are a couple of maps on here, if we wanted to look at those, as you all may have questions, but Joe and I are here to, to answer any questions that you all may have or your comments that you all may have. I don't know how to get the screen back on, by the way.
Chris or Josh, can y'all help with the screen up here in the front? That might be a sign that you're getting old, because I can't get it on neither.
If there was a mouse, maybe I could.
It's right in front of you. If your drawer rolls out...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We hit it. Sorry.
Missed that drawer.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to bring up two of the documents, depending on which question.
What do I go to to get there?
I just sent you an email.
Okay.
Hopefully you all have seen this information. We did forward it last week around the time we were filing, so that you all would, would be aware of it and have some time to digest it, knowing we were scheduled to make a quarterly update to you tonight.
Thank you for, for coming back.
Yes, sir.
The, you mentioned a couple of times in this presentation and previous that you're committed to finding the best route. I was just wondering if you could define what you mean by best route?
The best route would be the one that has the least impact on the environment, cultural, and historic resources and landowners.
Okay.
That gets us from point A to point, point B.
Okay.
Yeah, well, even that, if that costs your company more money to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
No, we're, we're interested in finding the best route that has the least impact on the... on the communities and the environment. And that's what the process is all about.
And can you, can you explain perhaps the reasoning behind some of the alternate routes that, that would make these better, moving towards best routes, as opposed to the original proposed route? Like 93, 87, which you've heard people comment on today, or even 110, which seems to more or less skirt the county, but does kind of intersect at the kind of far eastern portion of the county?
Right. So the, the point of the process thus far is to understand what the concerns of the communities are. We're also, we're also at the same time interacting with many agencies, be them nongovernmental agencies, environmental agencies. We're already meeting, talking with the Fish and Wildlife Commission, the Department of Environmental Protection, the Appalachian Trail, the Forest Service, all of these entities weigh into this process with FERC being the coordinating agency. So I don't know that we can classify these routes as better yet. It's to be determined, but we have assessed what the concerns are to date, both from literally the thousands of people and, and agencies that we've spoken with and those that have commented on the docket. And, and part of the process is to evaluate alternatives. And so we've come up with these alternatives to try and address some of the issues that we've heard. And it doesn't mean that the current route is off the table. It means that these are potential alternatives that could address some of the issues that we've heard. And again, that's a, it's a long process to evaluate these from a number of different aspects: environmental, constructibility, landowner issues, all of those types of, types of things weigh into the process of evaluating and ultimately picking what the best route is.
Sure. And specifically these three, which are up here right now, what do those, what issues do you see those as addressing?
Okay, so the, let me, let me take the larger one first. That one addresses some issues that we heard in Monroe County, Giles County, and in Montgomery County. For instance, in Monroe County, we had talked with the Red Sulfur Public Service District. It's a water service district in Monroe County, and we were, the original route was close to, if not in, their watershed. And so we've tried to address that concern, and it was also in proximity about, I want to say a mile, from James Monroe High School. So we were trying to see if there was an alternative to address any concerns related to the proximity of the high school. In Giles County, Newport Historic District was one that, that came up. Let me refer to some notes here, because all of this is in the filing that we made There's a number of other things. There's a, a, let's see. There are also some areas of karst geology between Pembroke and Newport in, in the Virginia area that we've tried to avoid. The Nature Conservancy Blake Preserve you see on here, that's another one, another agency that we've met with and identified an issue. So it's just a series of, again, environmental, cultural, historic, and landowner issues that have led us to, to develop these alternative routes that we're gonna look at over the next several months.
I have several questions in regards to at least my concerns from back in November. It doesn't seem that Alternative 87 answers too many of those. Can you help me explain? It, it seems to still go through a fairly populated area. It cuts a couple of roads through Preston Forest and doesn't seem to answer those. In addition, have you been able to find any information about the abandoned coal mines that were on Coal Bank Hollow Road?
I don't know specifically on that. I don't know if you, if you know.
They're there.
Excuse me, folks, just hold on a second. Go on. My family's lived here for a long time, and, and there was coal mines back there in the 40s and 50s, and, and small mines, not major operations, but people mined coal there for years. And so they are there. Have you been able to determine any way or means to, to find out where those are located?
Well, we haven't. I mean, we, as was mentioned earlier, we are starting to survey the area. We won't really begin surveying earnest until the spring. It's pretty difficult right now to be out surveying. So there are many things that we need to look at from an environmental perspective and from a survey perspective over the next several months. A lot of that is, again, part of the process to determine which of these routings is, is best. I'm sure that, that we have that on our list, and we will try to address that issue as best we can. We do have a geology firm on, on board to help us with any kind of karst or those types of issues. Make sure we mitigate and manage those as best we can, and they will be helping us look at the surveys and, and route things as best we can to avoid those particular concerns.
In regards to Alternative 93, and it looks like, I know some of the, the commenters were talking about, it's difficult from the maps to tell, but it doesn't look like it actually crosses any of the roads in Preston Forest that stays on the other side of the ridge. Am I reading the maps correctly and the topography? I also have another map that I believe your company provided that actually has the GIS property, the individual properties that were listed. Am I reading that map correctly, that it's on the other side of the ridgeline, which is more towards Craig's Creek Road and the Pandapas Pond side?
We can't speak to exact topography. We did have some more detailed maps.
In regards to, in the map specifically, I'm referring to, it's figure number five. It's in your FERC filing on page 13. Or, excuse me, not figure number five, it's the one prior to that. It's figure number four, Alternative 93. And looking at the topography map, it looks like it starts right before the 207-mile mark, and it appears to...
Is it the other map?
It may be another map that, that was provided.
Where's the other?
I don't have that detail here. We can, I can take that question back. I don't know the specifics of that particular topography. We have a lot of engineers and environmental folks working on this, and if we have a specific question that, that you want answered there, we can certainly take that back and get that answered.
Well, obviously, some of the folks are very concerned about coming across the lines and not being able to get out if there was...
I understand.
And it, with it being on the other side of the ridgeline, and away from there, if there was a cataclysmic event, that it would be on the other side of the ridgeline, and it wouldn't be blocking the roads. And so that's, I guess I'm wanting to know how specific arms. Then, and I've got a series of questions from the November meeting I would like to go over. At one point in time, I asked, how many locale, or in Montgomery County surrounding, gas customers have said, "We need this"? Do you have any specific companies that directly solicited you and said, "This is something that we want"? If so, what are the names of those companies?
Well, we, we have been having our commercial team out, working with the local distribution companies. As you probably well know, this is a transmission project, so in order to get gas to an end user, there would have to be a local distribution company. We call it an LDC in between. And so we, we have had our commercial folks out talking to the local distribution companies. Roanoke Gas is an example. We have heard from them that in Franklin County, the town of Rocky Mount is a particular area that has not had access to natural gas, and they are looking to see whether or not it would be possible to bring natural gas to Rocky Mount. That's one example. Our folks are, are out there working with, with all the LDCs to try and, and make the, the marriage, if you will, between the community and the local distribution company. Ultimately, the local distribution company would have to show the demand, show the, the need for a tap, we call it, and we would work with them on that.
So if I hear your answer correctly, there has been no interest in Montgomery County, Giles County, that you can talk about or Roanoke County?
Not, not in Montgomery County, to my knowledge. I think we have talked with, I'm trying to remember the name of the, the company, but in Giles County, we've been talking with them. They have, in the past, mentioned interests with, I think it was a industrial park of theirs. That may be much more preliminary. It's important to note that this is an open access project as well, meaning a, a local distribution company can tap this line at any point in time if it's built. It doesn't have to be engineered in the construction and engineering of the project that will be tapped after the fact as well.
But isn't that cost really exorbitant if they're not, don't tap in immediately? It's, it's like over a million dollars to tap in?
No, it's not that big of a difference between doing it during construction or doing it after the fact. It's all, a lot of it is about the economics of the demand and, and tapping into the, the pipe, not necessarily whether it's done before or after operation.
And one of the things that you're, you're talking about, compressor stations. Have you, on any of these alternatives, do you know whether your compressor stations are gonna be? Are they gonna be in Montgomery County? How large are they gonna be? Do you know those questions?
We don't know all those answers yet. A lot of that depends on the, on the routing, where, where the route goes. They're gonna try to space them equidistant. The filing that we made, it was called our resource report, 1 and 10, that we filed with FERC a few months ago, basically broke the route into, into four segments and, and said those are where the four stations would be. But all of that depends on ultimately the final route and, and the engineering behind needing to push the gas from, from point A to point B.
So the answer is you don't have an answer right now in regards to Montgomery County? Is that, am I hearing it correctly?
That's correct. It said in Roanoke, in the resource report, but, but that can move, depending on the, the routing. It could be Roanoke, it could be Montgomery, it could be Craig, if, if one of these alternates is used. It really depends on the, the final engineering and the final route.
Have, you talked about whether the compressor stations will be electric, or will they have their own motors there?
Excuse me, the compressor stations will be... With gas-fired compressor stations.
Okay, sir. As far as, one of the questions I asked about geology in November, and I asked a question about if there was an earthquake, what assurances do we have? And there was a discussion initially in November, here's how we're gonna build the line. And so there, now that we, I assume your company does know that there is a major fault line in Giles County, what types of different engineering are you going to utilize in the construction of the pipe to deal with the earthquakes or potential earthquakes from over Giles County? And obviously, there are effects that might spread into Montgomery County.
Right. Well, there's a number of engineering practices. I mean, the, the thickness of the pipe can be varied, especially by density in the particular area. There's a number of things that will go into the, the engineering and construction of the pipe that will, we will look at that issue. If, if you look at the seismic zones in, in the United States, there are plenty of pipelines in, in seismic areas. In fact, I think you have a major pipeline here in Virginia and had a major earthquake not too long ago with no incident to that major pipeline. So it can be done, and it will be done safely through our engineering and, and construction.
As, and I guess, in looking at, one of the questions I had about commitment of not using herbicides and using either bush hogs, those type of things to clear the land, are you willing to put that in writing and that type of commitment as part of your, your FERC plan and saying that you're not going to use the herbicides?
I believe we are.
Okay. In regards to bonding, as far as your initial, are you going to be required to set aside a bond, a performance bond, to make sure? And if so, what is the amount of the performance bond?
I'm not aware of any performance bonds required for this project.
I understand that there's nothing required, but are you willing to put up a performance bond to assure the citizens, "Hey, we're gonna live up to our expectation or what we're saying"?
We could discuss that. I really don't have any details of what you're talking about and what, what the impacts would be to the project, so it's, we're open to discussion.
And I guess part of, I'm tainted a little bit about from the December, and it came with this disclaimer basically saying we didn't use standard accounting practices to come up with these numbers and how the economic benefit. And it, perhaps it's the lawyer in me, it immediately says, "Wait a minute, I can't believe anything that's gonna follow from here." And so from that point, I'm looking for some kind of actual assurances that I can count on and that the citizens can count on, and that's why I was asking about performance bonds.
Understand. Look, and we've...
No, no, go right ahead.
We've committed to, we've committed to coming here and talking with you all and keeping this dialogue open. We said that the night you passed the resolution, and we, we have done that, and we can, will continue to do that. So we, we wanna have that dialogue, and, and again, we're committed to doing that all along the route.
Thank you. I appreciate you attempting to answer my questions. In regards to the factors of Craig County, obviously Craig County is a lot less populated than Montgomery County. Is that a factor that you're taking into consideration and, and putting the line over there?
One of the factors that, where the line is shifted, where there's, there's alternative route north and alternative route south, is that there's an area on the, on the border called the Peters Mountain Wilderness Area. Peters Mountain Wilderness Area is, is part of the national forest, but it's a, it's a wilderness area within the national forest. We cannot go, cannot obtain it right away through Peters Mountain Wilderness Area. So are we going south there or north of there?
No problem, no problem. Go right ahead. Other, Mr. Craig?
I keep mine real, real slow. I believe we need to see the other map that you had up there for Alt. 135 is there, but you can't tell a whole lot about where it's going. Okay. That, Alt. 135, if you back it up into where it comes across 81, and then comes over and comes across 460. I would certainly like to see a map sometime, some way, somewhere, somehow, that would tell me that that little section there is, the green and the red are the same, and that's where it's gonna come through.
Okay. All right, since we don't have those detailed maps here, we'll make sure we follow up with them.
I appreciate it.
I believe that's the section we've talked about previously that, that we know you have concern with, and, and we will follow up with more detailed maps in that section.
Yeah, that's, that should be right on the Roanoke, Montgomery County line, but I can't tell exactly where it's at the way it's spread there, so I'd like to see something there that I could sink my teeth into.
You got it.
I answered them to Chris, God.
Yeah, Chris got right there.
You asking us?
Ms. Park, can you see? Have any?
No, it just goes through my territory again.
When will the next update be?
Yeah.
You mean to this board? Yeah. Well, we pledge to do it quarterly, so we can talk about when we want to do that. Obviously, there's a regulatory process that we're filing. Hopefully, we'll have an update from FERC soon on when those scoping meetings will be, and when, where, and when they'll do those meetings. It's up to them, frankly, where they hold them, how many they hold, and when they do them. So they should be telling us soon when that's gonna be. And then there's a series of other steps that would lead up to what we anticipate or estimate our formal filing with FERC being in October. So we can certainly come back in, in the next quarter and update you, and maybe it will make sense to continue the dialogue, and depending on where we're at with certain milestones with FERC, we can talk about what makes the most sense.
Did you, you say you wanna do your final in October?
But that would be the formal application. So what we, what we applied for at FERC in October of last year was what's called pre-filing, and that sets off about a year's worth of public dialogue, filing of what are called resource reports, these scoping meetings, a series of steps that lead up to a formal filing from the applicant, being the company or the project, of what the project looks like. And that kicks off what's called the environmental impact statement, which would happen over roughly another 12-month period from October this year into the latter part of next year.
So in October, you're gonna find out what route you wanna go?
That would, around there, October, or, or thereabouts, depending on the FERC schedule, would be, yes, roughly when we would have a pretty good idea of where the final applicant or application route would be.
So would you come in front of us, or at least talk to Craig, and let us know what route you're gonna pick?
Of course.
Before it gets out in the media and we get blindsided with it?
Of course we will, yeah. I mean, it, you know, obviously, we have a lot of stakeholders to worry about, including FERC, and that's who we formally file it with. So we will do everything we can to, to make sure you're aware of it, either just prior or as we file it with FERC.
I mean, I hope you understand where I'm coming... I hope you understand where I'm coming from. You know, if we get a phone call.
Understand.
Somebody, you know, says this in the county, well, they said they're going here. What do you say? I don't know. I mean, you know, they're going to think.
We want to be a good resource for information and we will pledge to do that, of course.
I appreciate that. Question. Okay, we talk about updates. So when you look at one of the alternatives up there, and would you come back in your next quarter report to report back to this board and says, yes, we looked, we had our geologists up there, we had this and that, we found this coal mine, we found cars, to let us know what you did find up there, whether it's suitable to take the line through and see? Because I know it's coal mines, old coal mines back in, around Brush Mountain and there's sinkholes, there's a little bit of everything, but you're not going to do any surveying, I guess, until after the weather break and so forth, and then you'll have your geologist and whoever else that you have up there looking to see whether it's suitable. Is it possible that you can, in your next quarter report, report to this board and I guess our constituents, this is what we found with alternative, you know, 87, this is what we found here, but it's still suitable even if you even come and say, we found this, but it's still suitable for us to put the pipeline through?
Yeah. Okay, so I understand the question and I will have to check with our environmental and engineering folks to find out what the schedule for all of that is and whether or not that's reasonable. If it's reasonable, of course, we can try to update you as best we can during the next quarterly update. So again, it's going to depend on their schedule for all of this work. We've got a lot of survey work.
And they've got a lot of survey work and everything and you might have it all done, but at least you'd have a little bit of it done and says, this is where we are with this alternative or and so forth.
We also need to be mindful of getting ahead of ourselves in the process, in the regulatory process. So as best we can answer those questions at the next quarterly update, we will do so.
And go ahead, Matt.
No, go ahead.
And then we'll, we'll figure out, I guess we're getting Mr. Matt as so, to figure out the next time that you guys are going to come.
Yeah.
So we can lock that into our citizens' minds to, like, the 23rd has been locked in for a long time.
So when is the next quarterly update?
Well, you would assume, we will tentatively talk about the second meeting in May.
Okay.
Which I'll have to look at a calendar to see.
All right, well, let's mark that tentative again. Depending on where we are in the process, if we're not at a point where we have substantial information, you know, we can, we're going to need to talk about whether or not May or June, whatever.
Right.
But we can tentatively pencil that in.
That's May 20, that's May 25th max.
What's the date?
May 25th is the second board meeting in May, so, and again, if there's nothing to report, fine, if there's a lot to report.
That's Memorial Day.
I thought it was.
Is it Memorial Day, Monday or whatever?
Yeah. May 25th, is that Memorial Day?
Yeah.
It is. Tuesday, Tuesday the 26th. Yeah, the 26th. Sorry about that.
Matt? Yeah, just off of Supervisor Brown's question, I'm curious, when we, when we receive this next quarterly report, are we going to see more alternative, proposed alternative routes or fewer?
It's possible we see more. I guess it's possible we see less too. It all depends on where we are in the process. Obviously, by the time we get to later this year, we will have needed to kind of hone in on what the final route is, but it's certainly possible based on the feedback we get with all of the agencies that we're working with, you know, if we find some other environmental concerns that an environmental agency may have, it's very possible we could have other alternatives.
So what happens to take an alternative off the table? What would need to happen, like say 87 or 93, unacceptable? What would need to happen for that to, for you to come back to us?
We'd have to have either our construction folks, our engineering folks, our environmental folks say it's just not, it's not feasible. You know, I'm sure we've already looked at these to some extent, but there's a lot of work yet to be done to make sure they're viable. So it's certainly possible they find something that's inconstructible perhaps and the construction folks say it's not doable, in which case that route could be taken off the table.
So it's theoretically possible though that the number of alternatives will simply continue to multiply until we get to October and then all of a sudden we'll have one route?
It could, yeah.
Without any narrowing beforehand at all?
Would we narrow?
Through the, through the process, through the scoping meetings and the additional meetings that will happen with the FERC, there'll be some issues raised, some information obtained, and there'll be some narrowing. It's hard to say when that narrow is going to happen.
Yeah. But, but, well, if it's a scoping meeting, so is it FERC that can take things, the scoping meetings through FERC will take things off the table as well or is it just simply decisions that your corporation will make?
The scoping meetings where information will be, more information will be teased out during, from the public and from the community. And that, and that goes back into incorporating how best to develop the pipeline and further route.
And that's, that's in a conversation because the scoping meetings, if I'm understanding correctly, are run with FERC.
That's correct.
Correctly. All right, so what would happen then if a concern is raised at a scoping meeting, would that information be taken to you and then you take that alternative off the table or?
Yeah, we would, in essence, if this is what you're asking, would be in control of the alternatives ultimately until we formally file, in which case the environmental impact statement process at FERC formally goes into effect and all of the agencies once again weigh in on the route. You know, our intent over the next several months is to work with everybody to try and hone in on what's best. And again, that's literally thousands of stakeholders.
Sure. So your, your goal at least is to narrow the number of options?
Of course.
The number of alternatives? Okay.
We need to make sure we have a final route by the time we formally file.
So hopefully when we see you in the next quarter, we'll have fewer alternatives on that, on these maps.
We will see.
Is there any alternative that does not take you through property in Montgomery County or anywhere else that doesn't take you through a village, a place where people live?
Not at this time, no.
Are you going to try?
Try to avoid a village?
Yeah.
We're trying to avoid a number of things. As I've said before, environmental, cultural, historic and landowner, there are lots of considerations in trying to find the best route possible. So all of those things go into the, into the consideration of which route we ultimately will formally file.
Well, it's going to cross somebody's land in Montgomery County. It's going to cross somebody's land, but as I look at these alternatives that you've done thus far, it appears to me that they're still going through very major areas where people live. If there's no way you can get through them, why have a pipeline? That's the thing that bothers me because whether you're going through Preston Forest or another area, another village where there are a lot of people, where there's, there are dangers for explosions, then why, why have it?
You could probably ask that question of any infrastructure project in this county.
I don't, I don't know of other projects that are quite as dangerous, potentially, potentially dangerous as this is.
I just wanted to ask, you know, when you were listing what you look at, I didn't hear safety, but is safety one of the things you look at because the people were so concerned about getting in and out of their neighborhood if something were to happen?
Yeah, I mentioned the design of the pipe, the thickness and there are regulations and standards about the density with which the proposed route will go through and how you deal with that from an engineering perspective, so.
But what about the egress, like trying to get out of a place if something were to happen? Do you look at those two when you're looking at the routes?
As Matt said, we do look at the, at the engineering of the pipe, but we'd have to look at and get back to you on that specific.
People like getting in and out. Okay.
Do your engineers come down to look at these alternative routes and see where they may go? I mean, why would you put an alternative route down a major road that goes through that particular area? As they were saying, Jefferson Forest Road South, I was trying to think of the other areas where, as Ms. Biggs says, there's not any way to get in and out of it if a potential disaster occurred or explosion. There's no way for the people to escape. So your people come in and look at that and see where people go and see how it crosses the fire trails?
We'll take a look at that. We've already met with EMS folks locally to try and understand what their questions and concerns are, so that's, that's definitely part of the process. You know, putting a, putting a pipeline along a roadway is, is not a unique thing. It's, there are plenty of pipelines, not all over the country, but in, in Virginia and in southwest Virginia, the route through commercial areas and residential areas.
Well, that may be true, but that doesn't mean yes, but no.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions about the process. Let's say that this board opposed the pipeline in general, but we said alternative 87 is the worst idea that you put forward, okay? How much is your company going to give weight to this board in saying, we don't like 87, we prefer the Craig County route and then maybe alternative 93 with some modifications? Is that something that your company is going to say, oh, okay, that, we're going to listen to what you have to say and make those kind of alterations? How much, how much weight do we have?
We listen to all constituents. You know, I'm not going to sit here and put a weight on your, your voice versus an individual landowner or an environmental agency, but we will take everybody's feedback and concerns into consideration, of course.
But do we have, what's the width of this pipeline again?
Forty-two inches.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
Do you have another 42 going through the middle of place? I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Creve?
Okay, I'm going to step out on the land here. And if you would like to do this and not have any, I'm asking of nobody, have nobody objecting to it, if you were to take that red line and come right on down to where it crosses up at Roanoke, come right on through, I mean, I don't think you've got much opposition there. I mean, I've lived here all my life and I halfway know where places are at, but I think you could do that and never spill a drop of water.
What number is that? 110, that's what.
You're talking about following where it says Roanoke?
The red, coming out of Craig County?
Yeah.
The red line comes all the way down to where it crosses right there at.
Right, with the green?
Roanoke and.
Oh, right there.
And comes right on across and then jumps back up on the mountain there again. I mean, I don't think you would have any opposition to that.
Yeah.
Maybe I should say you wouldn't have near as much opposition.
Well, look where it goes though. It goes right, it goes straight through another village. It's close. Okay.
Okay. Do we have, do we have anything differently we want to ask?
Thank you for coming again.
Yes, yes.
It's very important that you do that.
Well, we appreciate you having us here and we do thank you for your time very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch, Craig, about second quarter meeting.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Need a motion to go out of work session unless you want to talk a little bit. Have a motion in a, in a second with a clerk please call roll.
Mr. Creve?
Hi.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Hi.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And a mission is over. We've already come out of work session, now it's new business.
Okay, let me see, I got to get my thing back here. Okay, there we go.
Subject A, 1 Virginia, 2021, Virginians for fire redistricting.
I'd like to move the proposed resolution and this just sort of goes with other localities that have passed the same kind of resolution and we, I guess modeled it after the Christiansburg one.
Second. Have a motion in a second, any discussion? With a clerk please call roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creve?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Brown?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
No report, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'm telling you, he's ready to go, isn't he? He's ready to go. Okay. You going to yield your turn to the county administrator, huh? Okay, Craig, your turn.
Before I yield my time, let me go over two, two things, not a couple, two this evening. Actually, two bits of good news from the General Assembly. We don't get those very often. House Bill 1417, which was introduced by a delegate Yose to address some of the split precinct issues in District 7, 8 and 12. I got word earlier this evening that that passed the Senate 22 to 18 and it had been previously passed by the House, so, some of the governor signs it, that should address our split precinct issue. So glad to, glad to hear that. And the other bit of good news is the budget conferees over the weekend agreed to remove the requirement for the $30 million reimbursement from localities.
Yay!
We don't have to write them a check again?
No.
It's a back down. It'll happen some other way, don't worry.
Well, that, at least that'll help a little bit as we move forward with the budget, but that was, that was good news to hear and as I said, from Richmond, any, anytime we can get any good news, that's good. So other than that, I have no report.
Supervisor Tuck.
I happened to be reading an article that was put out by Reuters which talked about the derailment up in West Virginia. And as a result of that derailment, there was a large fire and that has damaged CSX lines. As a result of that, CSX has contracted with Norfolk and Southern to be bringing these trains, the oil trains, through the New River Valley at this point in time. There are about five trains per day carrying anywhere from 24,000 to 70,000 barrels of oil each train. So at this point in time, I would want our citizens to be aware of it, take some extra precautions when you're going across a crossing, especially those, we have a lot of private crossings that don't have crossing gates that come down. In addition, you should report any unusual activity to the local authorities.
And what was that volume again? You said like?
Each train carries between 24,000 and 70,000 barrels of oil and there will be five trains coming through the New River Valley until the rails are fixed by CSX. And that's according to this Reuters article that was, that came out on Friday afternoon.
Okay, Mr. Supervisor Gabriel?
Two quick things. First of all, I have an EDC.
trains coming through the New River Valley until the rails are fixed by CSX, and that's according to this Reuters article that was, that came out on Friday afternoon.
Okay, Supervisor Gabriel?
Two quick things. First of all, I have an EDC meeting and a tourism meeting on Thursday, so I'll have more updates with them next time. Secondly, if I'm remembering the budget schedule correctly, Mr. Meadows will be presenting his, his proposed budget to us on March the 9th.
That's correct.
Okay, I'm unfortunately going to be out of the country at a conference, that's why I won't be there, so, but I assume that will be made available electronically, so I will, I will be reading it eagerly on the plane.
We can Skype you in.
You could do that, I'll be on the plane, so that might be-
That'd be expensive Skype.
That'd be an expensive Skype, so, but I look forward to more conversations on that going forward, and that's, that's all I have.
Supervisor Creed.
No.
Okay, Supervisor King.
I just have a couple of things, I'd like to tell the county boys in general, service and all, how much I appreciate what they've done during this snowstorm, they got out and they worked half the night, maybe all night, and I appreciate everything they've done for the citizens. And I hate to say we outran the fire department, we lost one of our own, it's a Warren Carpenter, he was a 30-year honorary member. I mean, he'd come to every oyster supper, and he'd come out, any function we had, he would have. And I just want to announce that, that he's going to be missed, terribly missed.
Very nice man.
He was.
He was, he was, served the fire department? Like, did he serve-
He was honorary.
Honorary.
Honorary member.
Well, he was what, in his 60s?
57.
57, okay. I know he was young.
Yeah, and sort of, sort of know the feeling, we lost one out our way, who was a charter member who helped start the fire and rescue squad in McCoy, Virginia, and I don't know, he had like 57, 58 years, or something along those lines, and Mr. John Pauley, I don't know whether you probably know John Pauley?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And he was like 89 when he passed.
So do we need resolutions or anything for either of these two people, or just the recognition that they passed away, or?
I just want to recognize.
Well, I think a little bit of that, not to cut you off, is that the recognition program that they had recommended that you guys have in your folder, that whenever we get time to talk about it a little bit, to see what we want to do, and maybe have a work session on it, that some of the people out our way and some of those members, they said they have some very dedicated people who's put in 50-plus years, and they would like to recognize those people before they pass. And so that's something that is on the, moving up to the front burner, that when we get an opportunity, we can get a couple of people from the Fire and Rescue Commission to come and, and help us shepherd us through the, the work session, to help us understand what's going on.
That's good.
Supervisor Biggs?
Well, let's see, our library board meeting will be this Wednesday, because it was canceled last Wednesday. New River Community Services will be on Thursday, and I believe we have a county school liaison meeting Thursday afternoon?
26, yeah, 26, yeah.
That's Thursday? Is that at 4:30?
Four, 4:30.
4:30.
4:30, okay.
That's better.
So no updates there.
Supervisor Perkins?
Well, MPO is tomorrow down in Roanoke, and PDC is tomorrow night, no, Thursday night, excuse me. MPO and PDC, both are on Thursday, in Roanoke and then the other one in Fair Lawn. I did help participate in the Budget Committee for Peppers Ferry, and I'm sure by now you've received the rates and-
Requested, yes.
And everything that are there, and if not, I'd be happy to email them to you. And Chris, you had an editorial in Sunday's paper, all about you, you didn't write it, but all about Mr. Tuck. Did everybody read it?
Mm-hmm.
It was about the pipeline, right? Right?
I don't know, he come by and stole my paper.
Well, I, I think he's handled it really well, his head doesn't look any bigger, so I suppose he's pretty good, but that's, that's really all I have.
Well, I think everybody else reported some, I think I'm going to make up some. Now, at Wednesday, 25th, the chamber meeting at, at 3 o'clock, the liaison with the chamber and school liaison with Supervisor Biggs, and Craig and I will be going to the Mayor's Insurance Conference down in, in Roanoke, and this is, I guess, sort of a, a first one for me down that way. We usually go to the one, oh, at the PDC with people from, you know, Platteck County and Giles and those people up that way, so I guess this one will be new for me, and then I guess I'll get to meet some of the people from our neighboring jurisdictions.
That's actually something, the, the PDC down there has invited me to come on occasion, really for the last year or two, and I try to go, they, they meet once a quarter, and I try to get down there when I can, but this is the first time that I recall that they've sent me a note and said, we're having a mayor's and chairs meeting, can you and your chair come down, too? And I said, absolutely.
And then I think it'll give, give us, it'll give me an opportunity to meet the Roan, New Roan County Administrator and so forth, and so on the other people down that way.
We don't want the storm, the perfect storm.
We are adjourned.